Good evening and welcome to tonight's dual-language Town Hall on Education in Lompoc. I am Dinah Perez Lockhart, tonight's co-moderator and president of the American Association of University Women, Lompoc Vandenberg Branch, a nationally-recognized five-star branch. AAUW is a nonpartisan organization committed to a mission of equity for all through research, advocacy, and education. AAUW is open to all genders and offers impactful local programs, including TechTrek for rising eighth-grade girls to introduce them to STEM pathways and local college scholarships. I am joined tonight by our co-moderator, Ms. Carmen Martinez, an alumni of Lompoc High School and future for Lompoc youth. Carmen is a graduate of Allen Hancock College, having earned three degrees and working on her fourth. We are also joined by the League of Women Voters, North County. The League is also a nonpartisan organization which encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government through voter registration and education. For the last 60 years, since the chartering of our branch, AAUW has hosted nonpartisan candidate forums and town halls as a service to our community. Tonight, this Town Hall is offered with dual-language live interpretation, in-person, and on Zoom webinar, so that all can participate in their preferred language, thanks to the sponsorship of the Fund for Santa Barbara. For the first time, mixteco interpretation is also being provided, thanks to the Lompoc Unified School District. Our live and Zoom audience has wide representation of interested community members, students, and families who are excited to participate in this important Town Hall.
Here's tonight's agenda. We will go through a welcome and a land acknowledgement, dual-language Town Hall protocol and structure, panel presentation, question-and-answer sessions with panelists. We'll do a thank you to all, and then we'll remind you to complete the questionnaire and drop it off at the AAUW table for a free gift. As a reminder, no unauthorized video recording or photography is permitted. Please silence all cell phones. Before we begin tonight, we acknowledge that Lompoc Vandenberg rests on the ancestral land of the Schumash people. AAUW honors the Schumash elders, past, present, and future. We come together tonight following the Schumash tradition to learn and grow as a community. As we begin our forum, we will do our best to speak slowly and clearly to enable accurate interpretation, and we will give speakers a signal if they are speaking too quickly.
Here is tonight's protocol for the question-and-answer session. Advanced questions came from the community through the registration process. Questions may be submitted during the Town Hall and will be moderated. For the in-person questions, write your question on the index card that was on your seat and hold up the card, and it will be collected by one of our student ambassadors. If you are on Zoom, type your question into the Q and A. Reminder: Please hold applause until the end of the Town Hall.
I am happy to introduce Dr. Clara Fineran, Superintendent of the Lompoc Unified School District, and Dr. Kevin Walters, Superintendent and President of Allen Hancock College. Each presenter has a short 10-minute presentation, beginning with Dr. Fineran and followed by Dr. Walters.
Thank you very much. What a wonderful event. I don't know that this type of event has ever been held here in Lompoc, and if not, it's been quite some... if there has been, it's been quite some time since that has happened. So, just so happy to be here and want to thank AAUW for supporting this event and the Fund for Santa Barbara, of course. It is so wonderful to see so many community organizations here. Thank you for being here. I'd like to thank... I have three board members here from Lompoc Unified School District, Mr. Frankie Caldera, Mr. Mitch Torina, Ms. Tracy Phillips. Would like to acknowledge them for their countless hours of unpaid service to Lompoc Unified School District. So, thank you for being here. I also want to acknowledge that in the audience, we have a number of staff members. Thank you for being here. And we have Dr. Susan Salsito, who's our county superintendent of schools, is here with us. So, thank you for being here, Susan. All right, to get started, as you heard Dinah say, we have to keep it brief, so I'll do... we'll do our best to stick to 10 minutes. I want to first start with a few things that have happened just in the last couple of weeks. School started, in case you didn't know that, and so we're so happy to have had a very, very smooth start to the school year, thanks to our staff, who make it all happen. And I just want to highlight a few photos that are on the screens around you. I think this is the first time we're using these new screens, right, here in the Dewey Center? So, yeah, thank you, Janelle, for making it all happen. We... On the upper right-hand corner is a wonderful event that happens on the base, and that's called Salute to Youth. And just such a wonderful time on the base and gives us an opportunity to connect with base students. There's a number of back-to-school nights that are highlighted there. That center photo is part of a beautiful mural at Lompoc High School that was revealed last week. We had a number of murals that were painted at several of our schools this summer. And we're in the middle of back-to-school nights, so just about every night during the week, there are back-to-school nights. I think there's one tonight at VMS, Vandenberg Middle School. So, welcome back to school, everyone. On the next slide, we have highlighted a few things that we wanted to point out to you and to our community. Last... About 18 months ago, for about a year, we went through a process of working on what our new vision, our new mission, our motto, our values. We went through that whole process with our entire community, mostly our students and our staff, and we have a new motto that we've been using for about nine months, and that motto is in the very middle of the slide, and it is that trusting relationships and high expectations means that every student succeeds. And so, I will leave it at that. We'll go to the next slide. This is a little bit of data about Lompoc Unified. That number actually, in the middle, is incorrect. I found out today. We have 8,928 students as of today. So, we were a little bit off when we did that a couple of weeks ago. So, and we have 1,500 employees, we have 16 schools, and we serve... About 70% of our students are Latino. Think it's really important to point that out. I also want to highlight, on the bottom-right corner, we do have an adult learning center. We do have an alternative... A couple of alternative high schools. On the next slide, that gives you a snapshot of our budget. Our budget is about $120 million. There's a... One of the biggest misunderstandings about K-12 education funding is that we just get a big lump sum of money and that we just get to dole it out. That is completely not the case. So, there are all these strings and pockets and line items that come our way, and so I just think it's important to note that. And without going into a really boring, couple-hours-long presentation about how school finance works, I just always like to point that out when we're talking about school budgets, especially K-12. On the next slide, we have just a little bit of information about the awards and recognitions that Lompoc Unified has recently received. You can go to the next one, Janelle. Thank you. Last year, Crestview Elementary School was named a Purple Star School, which means that it was recognized for outstanding service to military-affiliated students. So proud of that recognition. Maple High School was named a Model Continuation High School. Lompoc High School was recognized for its National Equity Lab work, which is just this phenomenal program where students get to take college courses on campus. Not only Allen Hancock classes do they get to take, but they get to take courses from places like Harvard and Howard and Stanford. We also received about $9 million in community schools grants, which really helps us to make up the difference for some of those COVID dollars that we no longer receive. Our aquarium, most recently, was awarded a state award for being an exemplary museum. So, you'll get a lot more information about that coming out soon in a press release. So, on the next slide, I want to highlight something else, which is all of our career technical education programs. If you go to our website... We don't have to play it, Janelle, but if you go to our website, there's a beautiful video that summarizes. We have over 30 career pathways in Lompoc Unified, and ranging from automotive to engineering to vet tech. It's incredible. So, wanted to highlight those. And then, as you know, we passed this wonderful thing called Measure M last fall, and so I wanted to spend just a moment highlighting some of the work that was done related to Measure M. Measure M was a $160 million bond that was passed, thanks to the voters here in Lompoc, and we just really want to thank Ashley Costa... Ashley's here. Chuck Madson, and the Santa Barbara County Taxpayers Association, yeah. Who helped us to get that passed. So, just like school finance and school budgets, I've learned quite a bit about how bonds work and about how bond financing works over the last several months. And one of the things that you all may not know is that we don't get $160 million all at once. It's parsed out over time. And one of the wonderful things that we get to do is to spend money on projects that are very, very critical to the success of our schools, and what we know is that when schools feel safe and comfortable for students, students perform better. So, I want to thank, in a special way, on the right-hand side, our Oversight Committee members. The list of those Oversight Committee members is there, and I think we were... There were going to be one or two. Steve is here. Ah, thank you for being here. Thank you so much. So, just so grateful that we have that Oversight Committee. They help us to ensure that we're spending dollars aligned with the way that the community intended for them to be spent. I think on the next slide, there's a few photos of some of our work from this summer. Roofing work was done, flooring work was done, and just so delighted that we were able to get so much of that work done. We can skip that. And I'll just talk briefly about another big project that we have going on, and this is, we are exploring building housing for employees, and we are in the middle right now of a feasibility study, should be done within about a month, to let us know if it is actually a reasonable thing for us to pursue. What we know is that because of the high cost of living here and in our area, it's very difficult for teachers and our school staff to afford to live here. So, and we want the best, most wonderful, most amazing staff working with our students. So, given those two things, we know that we need to really think about creative solutions. On the next slide, this just gives you three points that we think are really important when we talk about building this housing. The first is that it would be below market. The second is that it would be sustainable, and then the third is that it would reflect Lompoc. It would reflect our values. So, important to say here that no funds from Measure M or the general fund at this point are going towards this project. And so, when we receive the results of this feasibility study, we will certainly be sharing those, and we hope that it's a green light to move ahead. That's where we are, in that feasibility phase, and yeah, we would hope for about 100 units or more for all of our staff that could potentially be interested. All right. We want to say thank you to... I think there's 32 or 34 logos there. Want to say thank you so much to all of our community partners who make Lompoc Unified students really successful each and every day. So, thank you. Oh, there's a lot of ways to keep in touch with us. We have amazing communications, people.
This is where you lower your expectations. Good evening. I'm Kevin Walters. I'm the president of Allen Hancock College, and this is my 13th year at Hancock, and it's... I have the best job in the state. I have a friend who... At Miracosta College, who's the president, and we argue all the time about who has the best job, and she's wrong. So, I do have... One of my trustees is here, a trustee from Lompoc. Ken Ostini is sitting over there. And then, our former trustee, Jeff Hall, is sitting up here in the front, so we're glad to see Jeff. And I would just note that a few months ago, Ken went on the Honor Flight to Washington, DC, and I understand that Jeff will be going on the Honor Flight as a Vietnam War Vet as well, next month? Next month. So, that's awesome to have people in our community who are... Who serve our country and are now serving our community. So, I really came with a couple of things about our enrollment and some basic stats for what we're doing on the next slide. This is our headcount enrollment, and we're up over 20,000 students per year, unduplicated students, and you can see we're largely Latino. We are a Hispanic-serving institution, which is, at the moment, still a federal designation. So, we take pride in the fact that we are serving our community and doing well. And in fact, and if you look at the full-time equivalent students on the next slide, you'll see that, you know, the same kind of thing happens. So, a full-time equivalent student is the equivalent of a student taking 12 units. So, if one student takes 12 units, that's a full-time student. If four students take three units each, that's also 12 units. They count as one full-time equivalent. So, our funding is based on the full-time equivalent. We try to get students to take as many courses as they can, not just for funding, but because we know it helps with completion. For probably the first 80 years of the community colleges are about, depending on where you start, 110, 120 years old, and access was always our mission. You know, get as many students in, and good things will happen. Wasn't always the case when students just show up and wander around, and they don't always complete a program or complete a certificate. And we've really been focused on increasing the number of students that are actually completing a degree or certificate. And on the next slide, you can see that we've been fairly successful in that. We've set... Actually, all six of these would be records for the college if they were... If the others were gone, but you can see we're graduating over 1,000 students a year. And the really cool part is, is we are now that, if you look at that Latino bar that has the 800 and the red line is Latino students, we're graduating more Latino students now than we used to graduate when I first got here in total. So, it's showing that we can get to our community and we can help our community succeed. And one of the ways we're doing that, you know, there's a couple of things. How many of you know about the Hancock Promise? I think that's a pretty widely-known program now. Thanks to our community, we raised $10 million to support first two years of education at Hancock, and we know that students, when they come to Hancock and they enroll in the Promise Program, they go full-time, they take math, they take English, and they graduate. And we want... Isabel was a Promise student, right? Did you come to us? You just did the concurrent enrollment. Okay, she did concurrent enrollment. So, we're excited by the number of students. We have over 1,100 Promise students this year, and we have another 400 that we're in the process of getting them, getting all their paperwork in, and we're going to see good outcomes from them, and we're seeing that input value where they have to come and take... Go full-time. We see them graduating at a much higher rate than their peers who don't do that. For Lompoc in specific, on the next slide, we started a program... Go back one. Nope, keep going. That's the wrong one. There we go. Forward one. There we go. We are trying to make education as accessible as possible in Lompoc. Three years ago, we committed to offering six different degrees at the Lompoc Valley Center. We've run a few classes that were below what we normally would, just to make sure that we could do that, but there are six degrees across the four fields that you see up there where students can get their associate's degree without ever leaving the Lompoc Valley. So, we're very proud of that, and we want to grow more programs at the Lompoc Valley Center. The next slide is some pictures of what we're doing at the Lompoc Valley Center. We have our Public Safety Training Center out there. We just celebrated 25 years, and really cool thing that happened recently is the little logo on the right, you might notice it says "The Metallica Foundation." There's actually... And I suddenly can't remember. Let's see if I can see it on my screen here. "All Within Our Hands." That's the name of their foundation. So, the rock band Metallica has provided us with a... It's not a huge amount of money. It's $75,000, but it's going to support our fire services program. So, we'll be... We've got this really cool partnership now with, you know, one of the all-time great rock and roll bands in the country. They're really excited about that. So, as we're talking about what we're doing, though, Clara talked about the new motto that they have at Lompoc Unified. We started a new motto five years ago officially. We started it kind of floating it out there before that, and you'll notice our tagline now says "Changing the Odds." And when we talk about changing the odds, what we're trying to do is remove the barriers for our community. We know that getting through college is difficult for everyone, but particularly for the labor force in our community that are working two and three jobs and still barely able to make ends meet. So, we want to remove every barrier we possibly can to make sure that students are successful. This includes... We have a food pantry on campus. We have a clothes closet on campus for students who can get jobs if... Get clothes so that they can wear it to work or go out on job interview. We have student health services on campus, and we have emergency loans for students and emergency grants for students if they're having trouble paying their rent. So, we want to make sure that every barrier we can find gets removed, so the students have the opportunity to go to college in a way that's similar to what many of us got to do. You know, I was a first-generation college student myself, but had parents who had saved and recognized the value of college and could understand that that was the path out. And we know it's the path out for everyone, and I get so frustrated when I hear people say, "Not everyone needs to go to college." And I'm here to tell you, everyone needs to go to college. Every single person needs to go to college. Not every single person needs to be an English major, but if you want to be a nurse, that's college. You want to be a firefighter, that's college. You want to be a welder, that's college. It's all college. It's post-secondary, higher education, taught to rigorous standards to make sure that people can enter the workforce and be successful. Every student, if they want to have a job, especially in California, that they can pay their rent, needs to go to college. So, one of the ways we're helping with that is by creating concurrent enrollment programs. That's what Isabel was in. We teach college classes at the high school level. The high school faculty meet the minimum qualifications to teach for us. We have standards, mostly... Primarily, you have to have a master's degree in your field in order to teach at the college level. And over the... Over the North County, so this includes all of the school districts in northern Santa Barbara County and the private schools. We have 700 and... Actually, this just includes the four school districts. I'm sorry. We have some... We have smaller numbers in the private schools. We have 705 full-time equivalents. So, again, that's students taking, you know, that's, you know, four students taking a three-unit class in their high school. So, you multiply that out, and it's more than 10,000 high school students who are getting college credit while they're still in high school. And we now have many, many students who are graduating from Allen Hancock College literally before they get their high school diploma. So, we're proud of that advancement and the savings that we're doing for that. For Lompoc, Lompoc is a participant in this, and we... You can see that we have 56 and 54 the last two years of concurrent... We're going to have more this year. We have more concurrent enrollment in Lompoc than we've ever had before, largely due to the leadership of Dr. Fineran, Brian Aramio in the back. We've spent a lot of time working to build this up from prior years, but this really helps students get along the way to getting their degree. And I think what's most important about making sure students can get their degrees is what happens next. And what happens next is, we have finally got Cal Poly and Cal State University to commit to bringing four-year degrees to northern Santa Barbara County. We're looking to build a dedicated space solely for university partnerships. Starting in the fall of... Next fall, Fall of '26, CSU Channel Islands will provide a nursing program, Bachelor of Science in Nursing, in Santa Maria that students will not have to travel out of the area to go to. And Cal Poly will start offering a business degree on the Santa Maria campus. They're already in the second year of a sociology program, and then in the fall of '28 and the fall of 2030, they've committed to adding additional degrees. We're in conversations with them about what would best suit our community. And then, we have a couple of really cool partnerships going. One that's not on the screen is one with Questa College, where we're doing a cybersecurity program, and another is the Santa Barbara City College Radiography Program. Our local hospitals need radiography technicians, and we wanted to make sure we could provide that, and we can't... We can't build that program ourselves. It would take us years to build out that program, just to get through the bureaucratic hurdles. So, I'm getting a wave here, but I'm going to finish this little piece here because it's important. But we... Santa Barbara City College will be on the Santa Maria campus, offering radiography for students starting next year. So, the students are already enrolling in the precourses through Hancock, and then they'll be Santa Barbara City College students. One other piece of data that I wanted to share, because I think it's important, and I think our superintendents, I've pulled this data for Santa Maria, and I think... I think our superintendents, I've pulled this data for Santa Maria, and I think our districts don't spend enough time patting themselves on the back. 98% of the kids from Lompoc Unified High, Lompoc Unified School District who apply to the CSU's are accepted. 98% are accepted. That's huge. Okay? It's a little lower for UC, as you would expect. Here's the issue, though, let's do the next slide. The issue is how many of those students actually enroll? We know that for our community, we know for our community that the enrollment rates are very low. So only 30% in each case actually enrolled. And I bet if we dug into the detail for the UC, most of those are going to UC Santa Barbara because they can live at home and commute. So what does that mean? The next slide shows what happens to Lompoc, these are Lompoc students who come to Hancock. So remember, they were transferred, they were enrolling at the UC and the CSU at a clip of about 30%. If they come to Hancock and take 24 units, 48% of those students transfer on to some four-year college, and 62% transfer on, this is on the next slide, I'm sorry, 62% transfer on if they take 48 units. So if they go two years at Hancock, almost two-thirds of those students are transferring to some four-year schools, and the numbers for UC and CSU go up tremendously. So we're convinced, and we know that the pathway to college for students that have financial and family needs, the pathway to a four-year university is through Hancock. And we want to make sure that those students get there. That's it. I got a nice picture of our fire camp, but that's it.
Okay. Here again is tonight's protocol for the question and answer period. We talked a little bit about how, if you have a question for any of the panelists, please write your question down, and it will be collected by the Allen Hancock College ambassadors. So take a moment, please write any questions. We do have some questions that have already been phoned in by those who pre-registered. Okay, for those of you who didn't hear me, if you do have questions, please write them down on the index cards. We'll be collecting the questions and then asking panelists. So as I mentioned, we do have some questions that were phoned in earlier when people pre-registered for the workshop, and so we're going to start with those and just continue. If you do have questions, write them down, and they'll be collected.
I will start us off with a question for LUSD. It's a two-part question. What targeted interventions are in place for students who are more than one grade level behind in reading or math? What academic benchmarks or targets has LUSD set for the next three years, and how will progress be measured?
Thank you. So two things to start here. The first is that when I arrived here, I committed to doing three things in the first year of being here, and I'm so grateful to be going into year three. The first was to build trust, and the second was to improve academic achievement, and the third was to improve our facilities. And I think we've done all three of those things. Thank you to everyone for your support in accomplishing those things. But the academic achievement piece is absolutely critical, and we have done that. If we were to improve, though, at the rate that we are currently improving, which is a couple of percentage points, you know, per school and maybe half the schools per year, it would take us about 30 years to get to where we want to be. So that's not good, right? So we need to really push a lot harder and certainly more quickly to achieve what we need to achieve. And so the way that we do that is by focusing on what we would call very, very best first instruction. And so that means that we have to really help our teachers and our staff to understand what does that instruction, what does it look like? It doesn't look like it did 20 years ago. It doesn't really even look like it did 10 years ago. And what it entails typically to be most successful is a lot of voice, student voice, and a lot of choice for students. And what that does is do exactly what Dr. Walters talked about, which is remove barriers. So it removes barriers for students that have sometimes more barriers than others, so students that have particular needs, who might be served by IEPs, Individualized Education Plans, or who might be multilingual learners. When we remove those barriers, when we give voice and choice, and really help our teachers to understand what that looks like, all based in research and all based in really highly effective pedagogical practices, then we end up with scores and measurements that continue to rise. So that's really the key to improving the academic achievement. The second part of the question is around specific metrics. And what we've done for this year is each school is at a different performance level. So each school in both English Language Arts and Math has been given a target that we would love to see them reach. And so we're working with our principals and our entire staff on reaching those benchmarks, and it varies by school.
Thank you. Okay, our next question is for Dr. Walters. And that question is, what measures is Allen Hancock implementing to inform students about potential changes to federal loan programs and repayment options? And what guidance is being offered to help students navigate these evolving policies?
Good call. So one of the great things with the, because of the Hancock Promise, we don't have a lot of students with loan debt. We have a very low percentage of students with loan debt, which ironically actually causes us problems sometimes with the federal government because the repayment, the rate of repayment of your students comes back and dings the colleges. And we can literally have two students fall into repayment, just two students is all it takes for us to drop below the minimum threshold. But the penalties aren't huge. We focus on getting students not into loans, but into regular financial aid. I'm an evangelist on keeping students out of proprietary, what I call predatory institutions. These are the, you know, DeVry's and the ones you see advertising on TV, Santa Barbara Business School, Loris College. These are colleges that charge huge amounts of money, provide inferior credentials that are not valued in the marketplace, and leave students with a bunch of debt. So our job is to make sure students know that they can get, they can get the same thing they were looking for at those colleges at Hancock for much less or with our high school graduates for free. Last year, we increased the number of students receiving Pell Grants by about 500 students, and that was worth just under $4 million to our students. That's just money in their pockets to serve. So we set a record, we had about $17 million just in Pell Grants that went to students. That doesn't include their Promise Grant, that doesn't include any financial aid from the state. So our goal is to keep students out of debt, and then we don't have to, we don't have to worry about them having to navigate them.
Thank you. This next question is for both of you. Executive orders banning instruction-labeled racial-gender ideology or critical race theory in academic framework that examines how race and racism have shaped legal systems and societal structures in the United States may require the removal of diversity, equity, and inclusion curricula and related programming. How are LUSD and Allen Hancock College navigating these requirements while supporting students' identities and understanding of systemic issues?
I'm going to go first.
That's quite a question.
You know, I'll start because we, I literally received a letter this week from the Department of Education Office of Civil Rights that somebody had filed a complaint because we have five scholarships that are private donor-directed scholarships that are directed to women. And we have one program called E5, and it's empowering engineering, it's essentially a pathway for women in STEM. And so somebody complained, and so the Department of Education is looking into it. I firmly believe, the person who sent me the email, I looked up who she is, and she's a longtime advocate for students with disabilities. So this is not a witch hunt on her part, at least, obviously witch hunt on somebody else's part. Santa Barbara City College received a similar letter, so it's somebody here, you know, from this community, and the one at Santa Barbara City College was addressed to President Lori Gaskin, and nobody in here knows who that is because she retired 10 years ago. So that's the competence level we're dealing with. But it, you know, it's frustrating because, you know, and if you want to stay later and talk about critical race theory, I'm happy to do it, I got books on my desk, but that's graduate work, graduate school work. It's, you know, we talked about that in my doctoral program, and it's, it's, it's not something where, you know, we're not brainwashing people's kids or anything like that, but the reality is, is that you can't talk about the history of the United States and you can't talk about what we're doing without talking about race. It's absolutely 100% impossible. And for us to pretend that we're going to be race-neutral is just, is not realistic. So this year, we have lost a grant for the Lewis Stokes Minority Students for STEM. It was a grant that had nine colleges from the Ventura Colleges all the way up to Cabrillo Colleges working together to give students, it was directed at students that serve largely underserved populations, so ours happens to be Latino or in the federal term Hispanic. Every student could participate in it. My own son participated in this program. And it gave them an opportunity to do research, presented it for your universities, to travel to for your universities and meet with STEM engineering folks. And the grant was canceled with no evaluation, no conversation. And regardless of if you think that whoever it is who thinks it's not a good idea, you know, I believe the federal government should follow its contractual obligations. We had a contract, and they, they cut it off, and we won't be able to, we won't be able to even evaluate that program because they cut the funding. There was $25,000 set aside for us to pay an external evaluator to come in and give us an evaluation. That money's gone as well. Trio programs across the country are being gutted, which are programs designed to help low-income students. They, in our state, they help a lot of students of color in the Midwest and in Utah and Idaho. They help a lot of white kids. It's just low-income students giving them an opportunity. And it's really unfortunate that these things are just being gutted with no actual review or conversation.
Thank you for framing that. I think it's really important when we answer questions like this to go back to our values. So when we worked on our mission, vision, motto, we started with what are our values at Lompoc Unified? And we made three very clear statements that our board and, that came to us from staff, community, students, and that our board agreed to, and that we attempt to live out every day. And the first is that every student can meet high expectations. Each and every student can meet those expectations. The second is that trusting and respectful relationships are at the heart of what we do. And then the third is that we have to be centers of wellness, creativity, and learning in order to be effective. So if we look at those values, when we think about, when I think about answering a question like this, I think about how do we enliven those values on a daily basis? And what that looks like in a classroom and at a school is that it is a very clear expectation that we know our students and we know their stories. We don't tell them what their stories are, we don't tell them what their identities are. They bring them to us, and we honor those stories and help them to better and more deeply understand those stories. So that's, that's really, really an important piece. We honor their culture. We honor all the perspectives that come into any classroom, any school. And again, we help them to deepen their understanding of all of those things. And we have to have fun and have joy while we're doing all of that, right? I think sometimes we can forget that, unfortunately, especially in, we're, these are challenging times. And so I have to remind myself and certainly everyone that works with our kids that that's really important. And then lastly, I would say that if we didn't teach, we have to teach our students about the systemic issues that we all face and that have shaped our country. And we have to break and disrupt those cycles in order to have a, certainly have our students impact the world positively, right? So that was a great one to start with for both of us.
So this question was written by a member here in our audience. This is for Allen Hancock College, Dr. Walters. The nursing program. Will Allen Hancock College bring the two-year program to Lompoc? And the RN program has a nine-year wait.
So it's not a nine-year wait, but it's not quick either. So the nursing programs are overseen by the California Bureau of Registered Nurses, Board of Registered Nursing, the BRN. And so we, a few years ago, expanded from 38 RN students to 53. We added 15 slots. It took us 18 months to get through the BRN to add 15 slots to a program that already existed. If we could expand the program and open a second facility in Lompoc, that would be fantastic. The reality right now is that that's, that would take years to get through the program. It is one of the most frustrating parts of what we do. And it's, it's similar, when I said earlier, that radiography program, when we started looking into that, it was going to take a minimum of three years just for them to sign off on us being able to teach this program, that we know the curriculum. The curriculum is right down the street of Santa Barbara City College, so we chose to bring that to us. So the way the nursing program, there's two ways to get into our nursing program now. That 15 students, I'll come back to them in a minute. The primary way to get into our nursing program is to enroll at the college. You have to take some prerequisites. You have to pass anatomy, and you have to pass physiology. You have to pass English 101. And if you can pass anatomy and physiology, English 101's easy. So, but there's the biology classes in there as well that you have to take and pass. So while you're waiting to get into the program, the students start to take those classes. And what happens is, they start to recognize, oh, maybe this isn't what I thought it was going to be, and they find a different pathway. They might go into dental assisting, or they might do the CNA program, those kind of things. And then once you get into the LVN program, so that can take, it can take several years to get on that waitlist, but once you get, once you get all of the qualifications, But once you get, once you get all of the qualifications done, you are, you're placed in a lottery for that year. You turn in your paperwork and at the end of the, you know, whatever that window is, you know, all of the students who turn those in, then we, we just rank you one to however many qualified. And so you know your number. And it goes, it goes 38 at a time. So you can, you can then kind of start to count when you're going to get into the program. If you are already a licensed vocational nurse, oh, and then, once you complete the licensed vocational nursing program, you are guaranteed a spot in the registered nursing program. So you're, you automatically ladder into the next program. Those 15 extra slots are actually for students that came in who, and that's the nine-year list. So if you didn't come through our program, we had a waitlist, a separate waitlist. If, so you would say you're an LVN and you're working at Lompoc Hospital or Marion, you would get into the extra slots. So we would have 38 LVN students graduate, and every year, one or two would decide they didn't want to go on to the RN program. So we would take two people off of this, you know, this other list and they would get in the program. Now every year, 15 students get in off of that list. That waitlist has gone from being nine years to less than a year. So every year, we, we've been able to clear out that for that. That's program, I think it's four years old. It's not quick to get in. We, we understand that and, and we wish there was a better way to do it, that we, I mean, we wish, we wish there was a way for us just to wave a wand and get in, get more students into the program. The other issue that every college and university is having is hiring nursing faculty. It's very difficult to get nursing faculty because, you know, when you are nursing faculty, you have to work every day, right? You're, you're, you know, every day you have classes, you're teaching classes, you're overseeing students at the hospital. You know, if you're, if you're a nurse, you're working, you know, a couple of 12-hour shifts a week, and then you can pick up extra overtime. The pay, the pay for being a nurse is pretty good. And if you have the flexibility to be a traveling nurse, that pays really good. So we have a really hard time recruiting people who want to come be faculty. So we're, we're blessed to have a tremendous faculty right now that are dedicated to building the next generation of nurses. So I wish, I wish I had a better answer for you, but at least it's not nine years anymore.
Thank you. This is another LUSD question. What professional development is being offered to help teachers close learning gaps and use effective instructional strategies? What benchmarks are set for the next three years to track progress?
So one of the things we like to say is opportunity gaps versus, versus learning gaps. And so in order to address those, those gaps, we worked with a pretty big committee last year of mostly teachers to develop a professional learning plan. And so those teachers came together regularly. Remember how I said choice and voice in terms of student learning? Well, you know, novel, it actually works for adults too. And so it's really important that the adults have that, that say in terms of what they need to learn, what they want to learn. And then we help to shape that together. So we worked on that throughout last year. And what we're implementing now is focused on that best first instruction. And so we're, we're relying on what's called Universal Design for Learning, or UDL for short. And that's really just strongly based in research, best practices that work for today's students. And so those are, that's one really important component of our professional learning plan. The other really important component is our early literacy focus. So focusing on students that are in kindergarten through third grade and really ensuring that they have the fundamentals of what it takes to read and then to comprehend and all those things that go into literacy. So we're using, it's called, it's a program out of University of Florida. It's actually very commonly used throughout the country and we affectionately call it Ufly because we need a lot of acronyms and we need more in education, more acronyms. But anyway, so that is a focus. If you'll remember for a while, there was a focus on what was called whole language, right? And we realized that that probably wasn't the best approach. So we're, we're really honing in on what's called the science of reading and ensuring that we're teaching students to read in a way that is effective and gives them all of those fundamental skills.
Okay, this question is for Allen Hancock College. Are there any plans for further expansion or upgrades to the Lompoc campus facilities, including cafeteria and bookstore resources in the coming years?
And so we have about, I'm going to say it's about 700 students on campus total. And so part of, part of the idea of building those degree programs is to get more students to come to the Lompoc Valley Campus. I'm trying to think about how to say this without getting run out of town, but we need more, we need more people in Lompoc come to the Lompoc Valley Campus. That's the reality. The food service there, we've tried food service. We literally gave free space to a vendor for food service. They did not have to pay rent. We provided all the equipment. They still couldn't make it work because there's not enough students to make it work. You need about 1,000 people every day on campus to make food service barely break even. And, and our, the way our classes are kind of scattered out, you know, people are coming for evening classes, coming for morning classes and going to work. So it's, the only way that's going to happen is for more students to come and take classes. I feel like we're doing our part, the degrees. We have a contract with our union that we can, we hire faculty who are assigned to Lompoc. When I got here, Lompoc was the place that all the junior faculty went. And as soon as they had a chance to promote up, they went to, you know, they would go and teach classes in Santa Maria. We have faculty, we have STEM faculty, we have English faculty assigned to the Lompoc Valley Campus. And they are, they are super, super faculty. They were there Monday night until seven o'clock welcoming students. And they didn't have to, they were doing that on their own time. So we would like for that, we, we want the Lompoc Valley Campus to be more robust. We want it to be more energetic. The upside of this is, is many of the high school graduates come to the Santa Maria Campus because it's a college, it's more of a college environment. The Lompoc Valley Center is similar to the community college I went to. You, you go and you take your classes and then you go off and do whatever you're going to go do. And on the Santa Maria Campus, if you come to our campus, it looks very much like a four-year university. Students are there at two o'clock. There's a lot of interaction among students and a lot of energy on campus. And I remember last year, on the first day of school, I was at the Lompoc Valley Center in the evening as a class let out and, and two young women from Lompoc were talking. And one of them said, oh, I've got an eight o'clock class in the morning. And the other one said, oh, I'd drive to Santa Maria before I got up for an eight o'clock class. So, so until, until you, until, until that campus builds up, but I, I can assure you, we are doing everything we can to build that campus because we have such a jewel. As for expansion, we've talked to the school district about, you know, is there a way for us to build more facilities where we could do some middle high school, middle, middle college work there? And I've talked with Jeff Armstrong about a potential partnership that we want to do that would bring a facility to the Lompoc Valley Campus. And it'd be Cal Poly, Hancock, Santa Barbara City College and the base, working on, on some spaceflight type initiatives. So we have plans to, you know, to bring more and we're, we're committed, we're committed to making sure that anyone who's in Lompoc has an opportunity to get an education at the Lompoc Valley Center.
Thank you. Our next question comes from the crowd. It's for LUSD. Can we fix the bus, bus problem from Vandenberg Middle School? The concerns are overcrowded buses and poor alternative to pick up with a one-hour wait time.
Yeah, so transportation is a, is a quintessential nationwide problem that is faced in education. And there's a few things that we've done here in, in Lompoc to address that. And whoever asked this question, I want to stay in touch with you. So if you're, if you're a parent, I want to let you know a little, okay, cool, we'll talk. Thank you. So what we've done here in Lompoc to address the transportation shortage, it's really a bus driver shortage is the, the challenge. That's the crux of the issue. And so what we've done is we've worked with our labor partners to establish a $7,000 bonus as one example. We actually have right now, last year, we also hired a bus driver trainer because we didn't have that position. So we have a bus driver trainer that has been very, very busy. She also got certified at the state level. So anyway, all of that in, in place. We did all the, the right proactive things. Right now, we have four, where's Chuck? Did he leave? Five maybe drivers in the, in the queue with, with CHP. And we're, that, that should be a matter of days before those drivers should be cleared. So unfortunately, the, the hope was that they would be cleared right before school started and there were some delays. So I hear you. I, and we'll, we'll keep in touch about that specific route because that route is also a, a special challenge, but anyway. So that's, that's what we're doing to address that. I want to go back to the previous question really quick because I forgot a piece that I think is really important. You asked a second part to the question, which was our, what are our benchmarks and how are we going to assess that? And so I just, I wanted to make sure to be clear that we don't just put out all this professional development and all these things that we're doing and then we don't measure it. So measurement and accountability is really important. So we have a variety of ways that we assess, right? So there's formative assessments that happen in the classrooms. And there's periodic assessments that, that happen through a, a district-wide system. And then certainly at the end of the year, we have these what we call summative assessments, right? So that's the state standardized tests. So we use all of those and, and we're, we're in this process right now of doing these six-week analysis cycles. So I wanted to make sure to say that. I forgot that. Thank you.
So this question is for both Allen Hancock and LUSD. And it's kind of a little bit wordy, but I'll try to get through it. What measures are in place to ensure a safe and supportive environment for all students, including those experiencing discrimination or harassment? Does this include programs and resources to support students' social, emotional well-being and mental health? And what policies and procedures are in place to address bullying and harassment?
I gave you the, the other hard one, so we'll, I'll, I'll take this one. So it's really important that we have an environment at all of our schools that is just free of discrimination and harassment, right? So we, we have that expectation that we, that we put out there. And we can say that all we want, right? But then we have to teach and show students what that looks like and how you meet that expectation. And so what we do is we establish systems. For example, most of our elementary schools have like an acronym that they use, right? So they might use an acronym like ROR, right? Where each letter stands for a certain behavioral expectation. And then they teach the students, like the R might be respect. And then they teach the students, what exactly does respect look like in a classroom, in a hallway, in a, in a restroom, walking to the food service line, right? So, so the expectations are established and then you teach students, right? And then, and then you have to really show them what it looks like. So are there things that happen when you don't meet those expectations? And yes, there need to be those things, you know? When many of us in here were growing up, it was all about consequences, consequences, right? And so yes, there are consequences and we show students what those consequences are. But we show them in a way that is probably a little bit different than you or I experienced that as younger people. And so we really want them to understand the harm that they do. And we want them to understand where is it that that behavior comes from, right? And to try to address the root of where that behavior comes from. Most behaviors are expressing a need of some sort. And so we need to also attempt to meet those needs. We have one, I mean, we have so many community partners in here that work with us to address the needs of all of our children and I'm so grateful for, for all of them. And we have great teams of counselors, social workers, psychologists, and I'm sure I'm missing some groups of, of our staff, but who are all well-trained to support our students. So bullying and harassment certainly are in, are looped in there. And I think it's important to acknowledge that with, with bullying, you have to address all parties, right? And so we really attempt to do that very thoroughly, right? Both proactively, right? And then responsibly.
So I often tell Clara that I'm grateful to be at the college level. So there are things, we, I mean, we have plenty of challenges, but fortunately, the voluntary nature of attendance at our college takes away a lot of the things that you see in a kid's life history. So our goal is to support our students to have special needs. So we, one of the first things I was able to bring onto campus when I got there with the help of, of Dr. Henry Davis, who was a longtime faculty member with us. He, he was the veterans sponsor. And, you know, this would have been 2013, so we still have a lot of people coming back from Iraq and Afghanistan, coming back to college and integrating. And we built, built a veterans center to start with. That was, that was an important place for our community to have a space for, for students to be served. And we use that same model to identify students with the different kinds of needs that we've built with the supportive state funding. We have a pride center on campus that supports our LGBTQ plus students and anybody else that wants to go in. It's, it's open to anybody who wants to come in, have a quiet place to study, have a supportive learning environment. We have a named a dream center, which is for students that are either Dream Act students, DACA students, or are undocumented adjacent. A lot of our, we have fewer undocumented students on our campus than you'd imagine. We have a small but significant population. We have a lot of students on our campus who are undocumented adjacent. And we want to provide support to them as they're worried about their family members. As I mentioned earlier, we have, we have services for students who are struggling with housing issues, struggling with food issues. So we, we get to take it from the other side of being supportive of those students and we haven't really had to deal with the types of bullying and those things that you see on other campuses. And, you know, we have in our mission statement as well, we had convocation last week and one of the, one of the points I made is this is our mission. And, you know, not, we're a large organization with more than 1,000 employees, but, and not everybody necessarily sees the worldview the same way I do. But what I do know is that we all collectively came together and set a mission statement that we're going to be supportive of all of our students regardless of their race, regardless of their gender, regardless of their legal status. And we're going to do that. That's in our mission. That's what we're directed to do. And, you know, I believe it's the compassionate thing to do.
Thank you. This is another audience question. It's for LUSD. Are there any plans to increase access to dual-language K-12 program?
Yeah, so right now, we have, Carmen's back there, our dual-language immersion school is half good. And it is our biggest elementary school at nearly 800 students. And we, there is a, a pathway for students that continue from half good into middle school and into high school. It is probably not as clearly defined as we would like for it to be. And so we, we may consider whether we, because half good is so big, we may And so we, we may consider whether we, because half good is so big, we may consider perhaps another elementary becoming a dual language school at some point in the future. We may consider maybe expanding at the middle school level what those classes look like. And perhaps it's offering certain courses in, it's a dual language Spanish program. So perhaps it's offering those, a certain number of classes in that target language in Spanish. What, what we do know is that students that are in our dual language program do very, very well in high school and they also do, do well beyond, beyond high school. So I think we had our first, did we have our first graduating class, right, Carmen? This past, this past year, so they graduated from high school. So that's, that's on, that's on the radar certainly for our consideration.
This question came in from one of our Zoom participants. And I'm going to ask the question actually to both Dr. Finneran and Dr. Walters. I don't understand the context of it, but the question is, are there plans for Cabrillo High School to expand their participation with Allen Hancock? And I'm wondering, should that also include Lompoc High School?
Yeah, so, as, as Dr. Walters pointed out on, during his slideshow, there are a significant number of students throughout our district that participate in concurrent enrollment classes at Allen Hancock. Currently there's more at Lompoc High School than there are at Cabrillo High School. And that is certainly something that also is on our radar that we need to expand. So, I don't know what exactly the, the numerical difference is, but it, it's different.
This is to both of you. National Education Association leadership warns that the proposed federal tax bill may cut billions of dollars in food assistance harming rural and low income students. With these proposed cuts to supplemental nutrition assistance program and federal nutrition funding, many schools can, could see decreased access to free or reduced priced meals. How are LUSD and Allen Hancock College planning to address potential increases in student food insecurity?
Yeah, I'm going to go back just a minute to the concurrent enrollment just to make sure the expectations are right. So it's, it's, it's a little ironic because three or four years ago it was switched, Cabrillo had more than Lompoc High School did. There's two things and I, and I think Lompoc is doing as, the same as working San Diego's and San Maria are, is that hiring faculty who meet minimum calls to teach at the college level. That's the most important part. So we, when the classes come to us, we check with, we determine that the faculty member meets minimum calls to teach those college classes. And we then have an agreement with the district that our course outline of record, which is the official document of the class, that the learning standards are taught in the exact same way. So we have, so it's not as, you can't just say, oh, well, this person's been teaching history for 15 years, they should be able to teach at the college level because college level history is different than high school level history. So, what was the other question about? Oh, federal, federal funds. So we don't do free and reduced lunch, but we do, we are very aware of impacts on food service. The food pantry we have, three weeks ago, I think we had no food in there because the rates that had happened in Ventura County created some angst among the food bank operators and the food bank operators kind of shut down their operations for several days. I was in, I was in our food pantry earlier this week. We had chicken thighs in there, we had eggs in there, we had all kinds of stuff in there for families can come in and pick up one or two packages of each thing and go through the sort of making sure that we, we're working on that. But, but we're seeing, we're seeing the impact, right? We're seeing, we're hearing from farmers in the Central Valley, farmers in the Midwest that are suddenly realizing, oh, wait a minute, all of those cuts mean that they're not going to buy my crops anymore. And that's, that becomes problematic as, as it kind of rolls through the food system.
So, this is one of those responses that we don't, we don't quite know how it might play out, as with a number of things from, you know, from the federal government especially related to funding. So about 65% of our funding for our nutrition program comes from the federal government. However, we live in a state that currently has guaranteed that every student gets food, gets breakfast and lunch. So the, the challenge could potentially be the delta between what the state would have to provide and what the federal government provides, right? And we, we just don't, we don't know what that, what that would look like down the road. What we would hope is that it wouldn't become a district level burden. However, when things become a state level burden because of a federal action, they often, as we well know, trickle to impact us. So, it's a little bit of a convoluted way to answer the question, but, but it's, it's not perfectly clear right now, but I think it's important to know the facts, right? As I stand now.
This is a question for Allen Hancock. What is Allen Hancock's strategy, strategy to improve student retention and graduation rate, especially for first generation students?
So I'm, I'm a little bit of an outlier in that I don't talk about graduation rates because no employer has ever come to me and asked for a rate, they ask for a graduate. So that's why I showed you that slide before that showed the actual number of students who are graduating. When I arrived 12 plus years ago, the college would report the total number of degrees issued. So if a student earned two or three degrees, which in a community college is not that difficult, you can just add an extra class or two or reconfigure it in different ways. You can, you can graduate with two or three different degrees. That doesn't really help the local employers that when we say, oh, we had, you know, 2,100 degrees issued, well, when we really only had 1,200 students earning those degrees. So, so we track, we start with a Hancock promise, students should go full time. We know that, we have some new data that we just, that we just released, that if you take all of the first time students that are, say they, say that they're pursuing a degree, you start in the fall, and you go forward four years and you look at those students and you ask yourself, did they get a degree? Did they get a certificate? Did they transfer? Or are they still on campus? Any one of those four things? How many of those students, what was your, your, your number of students? We get 41% of our students in that, in four years are doing that metric. That's a good number for a community college, but we can do better. What we also know is that if those students take one semester of full time, one semester of going full time, that number goes from 41% to 54%. So more than half the students have a successful outcome four years later. And even better, that opportunity gap, normally we're measuring that and there's a gap. For our Latino students are right there, there's no difference based on ethnicity from, in that, in that measure. So, and we do that by counseling, we do it by making sure that all the faculty know how important it is that students progress from one semester to the next. And really having a cultural conversation about completion. We have to talk about students completing because if they come to us and they spend two years or three years with us and don't get a credential, we've harmed that student. They will actually earn less money over the course of their lifetime than they would have if they had just gone and got a diploma.
This question is for both Allen Hancock and LUSD. What measures and policies are the district and the college taking to ensure that students and families have safety from law enforcement carrying out federal immigration directives? Do these policies extend to after school programs?
So, to begin answering this, this question, we need to say first that school campuses are places where students should feel safe all the time and comfortable. So, and that's, it, it goes without saying that we are legally obligated to educate every student that shows up. So, there's, we're, we're committed to those safe, comfortable, welcoming environments and certainly we educate every, every student that comes through our doors. So more specifically, we've trained our leadership team, who in turn has shared information with our staff, that there are very limited, very specific requirements that law enforcement needs to follow if they're going to carry out immigration directives on school campuses. And we have guidance both from the state of California and certainly our, our county office of education and other experts regarding how, what that looks like. So in other words, a, it, there's really only a, a couple of very limited situations in which a law enforcement person can have access to a, a student on, on campus. I won't go into all of that, but, but we, we certainly know what those are. We also more generally have signs on and around our campuses that limit access. And we have a few sort of general things that are happening in response to the, the current climate. We have things like a walking school bus where at, at several of our schools where families walk to school together with some community representatives and with some of our, in fact, some of the people in this, in this room from some of our community partners are walking with those families to school. So, again, just want our schools to be safe, comfortable places for all students and we are certainly, you know, restricting access.
So we have, yeah, specific rules in place if law enforcement comes on campus for any kind of activity, their requirement is to come to my office. That's, that's the rules that, you know, that, that we've had long before the current environment started. We, we, that's the expectation we have, everybody on campus knows that. We've messaged it through emails, we've messaged it to students, we've messaged it through our convocation, which is our all staff meeting at the beginning of the year. So if somebody comes on campus with a warrant, they're coming to my office, I have to verify that the warrant is, is accurate and legal and, and then we will, our, we have our own police department as well, we have our own sworn officers. And our police department will escort the law enforcement agents to, to the proper place for that action. So, I, I, I feel good, we, we've got that messaging. I think I have our friends in the back that are pretty proud of me. I have my, I have my red card that, you know, we keep these around and we pass these out for our students and our families to make sure that they, they know what to do and how, and how to react in case of law enforcement. Probably the best compliment I ever received happened this summer when there was some, you know, the rumor mill is going so fast and we spent a lot of time chasing ghosts, right? There was the, a few weeks ago, there was the, you know, 250 ICE agents were coming in and I was like, that seems like overkill. I called a friend of mine, the highway patrol, he said, you know, they don't talk to us, but that seems like a lot. And so, you know, so we spent some time trying to calm that down, but we have, we have one of our police department cars, it's just a black Ford Explorer that has no markings on it, or didn't at that time have markings on it, and some students saw it and they kind of panicked. And one of the students told one of our staff members at the time, I'm not worried about it if, if they show up here, I'm calling Dr. Walters and he'll take care of it. So it was nice that it had gotten to that level of the students and, and just, you know, I, I put that in my evaluation, literally put it in my evaluation. But, but we're, we're making sure that, you know, we're, we're going to follow the law and we expect anyone who comes on campus to also follow the law. So we're, we're not going to interfere with legitimate law enforcement activity, but we are going to expect anyone who is doing that to also follow the law.
Well, we have had an amazing and informative discussion with these two very great community leaders, Dr. Finneran, Dr. Walters. Can we please give them a round of applause? This has been a very great evening. So we also wanted to thank all of our participating supporters and sponsors.
We would like to say thank you to the Fund for Santa Barbara for the grant funding, our collaborators, the League of Women Voters of, of North Santa Barbara County, the City of Lompoc, Dick Dewey's Center, Steve Ruiz, Sue Slaven, and this evening's staff, TAC TV and K-Pad Radio, Bill Smith, Lynn Carstlin, Pamela Wright, my co-moderator Diana Light, Lockhart and myself, our panelists, Dr. Clara Finneran and Kevin Walters, Dr. Kevin Walters, our interpreters provided by LUSD, our volunteers, our Allen Hancock ambassadors and students from Cabrillo and Lompoc High Schools, our timekeepers, Wynne Clevenger and Alice Down, the AAUW dual language town hall volunteer planning team, including Diana Perez, Lockhart, myself, Kay Duffy, Taylor, Pam Buchanan, Barbara Bolton, Pam Gates, Lucy Tom Herrington, Terry Force, Jeanette, Jeanette Levens, Mary Schaefer and Janelle Osborne. And we have a token of our appreciation for Dr. Finneran and Dr. Walters.